Welcome to...
Can you turn your microphone on?
Oh yeah, my microphone, always forget that. Good afternoon and welcome everybody and welcome to Mousehold Conservatives this Friday, the 30th of September 2022, following our last meeting which was our itinerant out on the heath itself. First of all, do we have any apologies?
It looks like Martin Schmier, isn't it?
Okay, so councillor Schmier not here, so I guess I put one of his colleagues to apologize for him. Do we have any declarations of interest other than the fact that we're all interested in being here? No declarations of interest?
Can I just say, I was lobbied by a lady via email about antisocial behaviour and I guess everybody else was.
I think most people have been, yeah.
Yeah. Although I declare an interest, it's not on the agenda at all.
Well, we're all interested in antisocial behaviour, so I don't think that's an interest that you need to declare.
But it's the only opportunity perhaps I had to bring it up.
Yeah, no worries, I dare say it will receive a mention at some stage in proceedings. Councillor Galvin?
Thank you, yeah, I did get that too and ask, and it's going to be on the agenda under ASP in Liverpool, yeah. So you can raise that when it's there.
Yeah, no worries. Do we have any public questions or petitions?
None.
None. Councillor Peak, your hand is up, sorry.
I've got a declaration of interest, I missed the site tour of Mousehold Heath, but that's what we can find out what actually happens on in the...
That's right, Will will be giving us a rundown on the site as well, so not a problem, yeah. Minutes, do we agree that the minutes from 17th of June are here an accurate account for those who were here?
Agreed.
Agreed, great, lovely, thanks very much. We now come on to management subgroup meeting dates, do you want to deal with that at the end, Lernie, now or...
It's just, it says in the terms of reference that the dates are agreed by the committee, the two dates there are between each of the next meetings and it's up to the committee to agree those suggested dates or look at other dates.
Well, I'm happy with those dates, anyone else, anyone have any problems or objections to them? No?
And just to, sorry, Chair, just to confirm that as Claire Cohen has stepped down as the representative from Mousehold Heath Defenders, it'll be Marion Maxwell as that representative who'll be on the subgroup.
Yeah, we're very excited to see Marion here, but, no, it's good to see Marion back in the saddle so to speak, yeah, no worries, thanks very much.
I've got to get out of jail one moment.
Uh-huh. Yeah. So we now move on to item... Oh, actually, Will, do you want to give a rundown on the itinerant now before we go on to item six?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay, thank you to everyone who attended the itinerant meeting, I'm looking, I'm sure you can see, I'm looking much more relaxed now as we've had some rain, towards the end of that extremely dry spell, obviously high fire risk, and we did have some big fires up there. Yes, we walked along Gilman Road and we discussed the litter bins and I was pleased to say that a number of cast iron bins had been installed, this is something that we'd been pushing for for a number of years, and since the meeting a further, two cast iron bins have been installed. Susan, would you like to say anything more about that?
Yeah, we're planning to remove the cast iron bins from the city centre and these are the bins that we're actually going to relocate to Mousehold and the plan is to eventually have all cast iron bins on Mousehold, so in the next two, three months, there should be, that should occur and obviously as and when they are removed, they'll be replaced, so that means that we can remove all the plastic bins.
Oh, that would be great, yeah.
Yeah, so that's a real positive, and also, I mean, they're bins that we sort of invested in, you know, a few years ago and I think they were quite expensive, so it's really good to reuse them in such a positive way and, yeah.
Sorry, I'm going to pass on from the defenders, I'm really, really grateful for them.
Oh, that's really good.
And many of you got them, have.
Well, we've got more, yeah.
They're just too heavy for the piggy to take them up, so that's been a really good move.
Oh, that's brilliant, I think we've definitely got more than we need and I think the idea is the remaining ones will go on the riverside where we've had problems where bins have been thrown to the river, so, you know, we'll get the most out of them in the most positive way, which is really good.
Oh, great, no worries, yeah.
Then we moved on to the desert wildflower area and we discussed the impact of the recent dry weather and also of trampling during lockdown, it was so, so well used that the grass was trampled and it still hasn't recovered, especially with the dry summer, and the members agreed that we help conserve and maintain the wildflower meadow by spreading wildflower seeds, and that occurred on Monday and Tuesday, it's a good time to do it in the autumn, give the seeds a chilling off period before the spring, and a wildflower mix, an acid sandy soil mix was spread by over 30 cubs from the Eighth Norwich group which are based down, but next to, they're Norwich School associated, but they're based in the hut next to the Red Lion, they're at Bishop's Bridge, so they came up, we did some prep with volunteers before, we tilled the area that we agreed to seed and they absolutely loved it, sort of chucking the seeds around and I said, I said that we wouldn't have access to a roller because on the, on the information sheet on the seeds it said that we needed to roll the seeds to get good contact with the ground, so I said it didn't matter because we've got lots of small feet, but they took it a step further and started rolling around on the grass, I don't know what their parents thought of that, but that was, that was really nice that they were engaged and we've had a nice email back.
We had a really, yeah, we had a really lovely positive email thanking Will for his time, which was really, really nice from the group.
Oh, that's excellent, yeah.
Yeah.
We moved on to the Gilman Road open space where we continued, where volunteers, community volunteers have been continuing to use battery brush cutter and sives to cut the playing field and we'll be bringing to the next Conservatives meeting, it will be discussed at the subgroup, but also a report will come to the next Conservatives meeting regarding the discussion we had around a contract change where local members of the community under the wardens' guidance managed the wildflower area using sives and rakes rather than a tractor managed, a mower.
Just for clarification for those who weren't on the itinerant, by sides you mean the old fashioned sort, don't you?
That's, that's right, yes, yes, councillor, they're, they're back in now, it's funny how things go full circle and I'm planning to organise a volunteer sive day on the heath, so if anyone's interested in learning how to sive then, but that's, I mean, that's the most sensitive way to, to cut the hay meadow, obviously with frogs etcetera, so we'll be looking into developing that more, we've also got the battery brush cutters as well, so that's currently being undertaken. We then, we then moved on to one of the HLS areas, the heathland areas, and we discussed the continued implementation of the Mousehold stewardship agreement which is due to finish in October 2023, but it's looking likely that it's going to be extended due to the Elms situation at the moment, obviously there's, you know, it's been put on hold nationally, so we're fully expecting for that to be extended, but of course we'll keep you all up to date, so yes, continuing to, to cut legged gulls, create bare ground, both which reduce fire risk and also halo mature landscape trees. We called in at the vinegar pond and we discussed the fish issue and fortunately we didn't see any more goldfish in there, but the contractor, I spoke to Nigel and the contractor who removed the fish, it's close links with the Norwich Pond Project and also the Environment Agency, and he suggested that the removal happens on an annual basis, but I'll contact Norfolk Wildlife Trust and Norfolk Ponds Project and give feedback at the next subgroup meeting on that, and then we had a discussion about the fire situation and heathland management and one suggestion was to install fire heaters on the heath such as places like Thetford Forest and I'm going to be meeting the fire service in the next few weeks and then again we'll discuss that at the next subgroup meeting.
Is it worth yourselves as wardens to have NAP SAC sprays on your vehicles for, they're widely used by the country fire service in Australia where I originally came from, were very effective.
Okay, I'll ask that question as well, thank you.
No worries. Councillor Galvin?
Thank you, can I just thank well done part of everyone for putting us there and for that support then, it was a really, really interesting tour around, wasn't it? Really appreciated it, there were some worrying figures about biodiversity that you shared as well, about the lack of butterfly and this year, so it was a most positive visit, so thank you.
And I'd just say you email everyone on the committee when you have a siving day, so those who want to come along, come, right, okay, excellent, no worries. Anyone else wish to ask or clarify anything about your report? No, Adam?
Thanks, no, I have to say there's any questions, I just wanted to thank Will and Susan, you know, for their fantastic work.
And to put him up with Daisy and Riley on the itinerant, my two dogs. Okay, we move now on to item six which is Mousehold Heath Budget Monitoring, pages seven to 12, yes, seven to 12, according to some of my papers. Are you taking it, Sue, or who's reading on?
I can go through it if you want, do you want me just to read through the points or, so, did you want me just to read through it and then...
Yeah, if, I'm guessing people...
You don't have any questions related to that?
Anyone have any questions, I'm guessing people have sort of read through the report, so it's, to speed things up it's easier if people have got some things they wish to raise.
Yeah.
Or questions about specific parts of that, rather than just reading reports for the sake of reading that sort of thing, does anyone have anything they wish to question, raise or whatever on the budget monitoring report?
What I would say is it's running as expected and it's quite, you know, there's no, we don't have any concerns within that, the budget, so.
So no surprises, yeah. Councillor Chalkin?
I was just curious with relation to the theatre productions going on on the heath at the moment, if that's, if they've paid to use the space or if this is...
No.
As with all large events on the heath, it's, the theatre company were asked to work with the events team and, but I'm not sure whether a fee was charged, but that's something that I can find out and then feedback to the committee.
There, councillor Galvin?
Thank you, I just wondered about, it was a question from a resident actually about the pitch, the food pitch, they asked why it's not being used at the moment and who paid to, it might not be the right place to ask it here, but it's certainly a question I was asked to raise for the pitch and the car park and it's not being used, maybe it should come up later.
Do you want to raise that now or, because we did discuss it.
We could discuss, Will, you have the...
Yeah, so we will cover that now, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yes, the, shortly after work was complete, the concession decided not to carry on with the agreement and, I mean, subsequently, immediately, we've had two applications for the pitch and we're processing one, obviously the one that came in first, so we're fully expecting the area to be, to be filled shortly, in the meantime it's actually a really useful area to part of the volunteer bus and also school buses, so Norwich High School for Girls bring a bus out every Monday afternoon and often the car park's full, so in the meantime it's really useful to have that facility up there, because obviously we're going to be spending a large chunk of the winter on St James's Hill clearing the burnt material, I mean, that's obviously going to be a massive job because there's lots of thick old gulls up there etcetera, so in the meantime, but we'll, again, we'll, we'll feedback to the committee as soon as we have some more news on that.
Yeah, it's worth noting that concessions are run by people who wish to make money, make a living at what they do and if they're not profitable then quite clearly they have to give up on the chap who recently, the most recent person gave away because they couldn't see a profit in what they were doing, but that's not to say another concession might come along and find that whatever they offer, you know, their major selling point might be something which does capture interest and they can make a living from it, so it's a case of we have to be prepared for these to come and go and it's as simple as that really, yeah, but hopefully they'll make a go of it. Councillor Galvin?
It's in the nature of a concession really, I suppose, isn't it, that it changes, I mean, just to follow up the resident's question was, did, who paid for it and is it just from my information as well, is it the work to be done to make it, did it come from Mousehold?
It did, yeah, yeah, yes, it came from Mousehold.
So it's covered within our costs, yeah. Okay, so anything else on the budget monitoring? Councillor Peak?
Yeah, just one inquiry about the government grant specific, is that set permanently or would it fluctuate?
And that's the HLS stewardship funding that we receive every year, so we've, we've got that until October 2023, that comes in annually, as an annual payment in around about December.
Intent to clarify then.
And just a point, do they make any annual adjustment on that to allow for inflation or anything or is it going to be a set amount throughout that time?
It's going to be a set amount.
Right, fair enough, right. Councillor Giles?
Thanks, I was just going to add, if people think we're running enormously under budget, obviously the recharge is to NCS, I'm having a six monthly instrument, so that's what we're so far on the project.
Uh-huh, all right, okay, that's good, so I think we've covered effectively the budget monitoring, so now we move on to item seven which is on page 13 of your notes which is the Mousehold Heath Management Update. Who's giving the brief and a rundown on this, is that you again, Will?
Yeah.
That's the Will show.
Yes, it was there today.
Yes, so lots of activity this, this summer, the work, the work on Mousehold is largely seasonal, so as you can see, it's been lots of survey work during the summer months apart from bracket management, the scrub clearing work, most of the habitat management work ceases and the emesis transfers over to events and also surveys, so all these surveys in the management plan have been completed, the Common Bird Centres, the Butterfly Conservation Survey, the two BMS surveys, there's been various moth trapping events and we're up to 200 scentless species, and we're hopefully going to make it up to 300 this year, but we had to cancel obviously two, two years of events due to Covid, but we're, we're aiming for 300 moth species on the recording around the other last 13 years on the heath. The Bumblebee surveys have continued and I'll be sending the B-Ball transit results into Bumblebee Conservation Trust, two bat conservation surveys were undertaken and again the results of these will be in the next report, I mean, just on that, on that note, on the face of it, we haven't analysed the data, but it looks like sort of bat, bat numbers were down this year in relation to the lack of insects because the, the surveys took place in, in July and certainly due to the extreme dry weather, bearing in mind that Mousehold is on sand and gravel, pre-draining sand and gravel it was, as you saw, extremely dry and this, this certainly affected invertebrate populations, but again, we'll have more figures and we're putting the butterfly survey data together, inputting that into the Butterfly Conservation website and we should have some, some sort of better data on that about how badly they've done this year because it, I mean, many of the, the food plants dried up in, in July and it was just, you know, I think it was just too, too hot for them through, 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 through large periods of the, the summer. The flower, the, yeah, the two flower surveys continued, one at the mustard pond areas carried out by the Mousehold Heath Defenders and also a survey on St James's Hill, there was a total of 1,167 community volunteer hours between the 1st of June and 5th of September, so our thanks to Defenders, Norwich High School for Girls and Mousehold Defenders, TCV, Good Gym, Nat West Corfu Group, the Assist Trust and all the many, many volunteers from the community which play a crucial role in managing the heath. There's been a number of events this summer, the event programme's been implemented in full, there's just one walk to go which is a fungi walk which is, I think it's the 25th of October, which is being led by the county, Sapa County Fungi Recorder this year, so very much looking forward to that, like I said, there's been a number of moth evenings, workshops and also a management and biodiversity walk, showing people the management that Conservatives are undertaking on the site. And I think many of the other subjects have been covered by, by the itinerant report, so i.e. the vinegar pond and fires etcetera.
And that's it? Just, I'll ask the questions and I'll jump in first if you don't mind, with the, with the bats, obviously their numbers were down because insects were down, are the bats basically still around but just dispersed further looking for food, I mean, I know probably more of an opinion than, you know, scientific observation, but, yeah.
That's an interesting question, I'm not sure whether, I mean, I, I hope that these species are moved to potentially wetter areas of the river valleys, salt marshes, local reserves.
People's gardens.
People's gardens, certainly, I mean, even the budleia dried up this year, so, and that's, you know, that's usually a species that can cope with a dry spell, growing on wasteland and things, so it's, I mean, I'm sure in, in future months, organisations, there will be, there will be information on, on the effects of the extreme heat and drought this summer.
Okay, questions, councillor, councillor, Marion Maxwell?
The vinegar pond, is it back to its original level or is it still building up?
It's filling up quickly and hopefully in an hour or two we'll have some more rain and it will increase.
And the thing is, I think the Wais and Strays from Newcastle University, they've put a display on in the community centre, they're finished with us now, aren't they? But apparently they're up on some sort of prize, it might be mentioned, it's a etiquette that's like, but it was a really, really great, I think you said it, didn't you, it was absolutely fabulous and I thought really we maybe could off-ask them if they want to put it on the, in the museum, the Castle Museum when it's finished, because the history of, I found out things that were so surprising that I didn't know, and I actually only came across it because I had to open the book because I cleared all the, the centre, I spent all day there, but it was really, really good, and thanks to Will and your colleague because you really did help me on the lot.
Councillor Galvin?
Yeah, I'd like to hear that and just ask, it was only on for a day and it was really quite an extensive exhibition, but could it be, maybe they can't do it again, but it'd be nice in the crypt even down here or somewhere if they could be asked if it's ever possible, because it made the link with other places as well.
That's always something we can look into. Councillor Chalkin?
I was just wondering if, to clarify, you said about the moth numbers and you're hoping to approach 300 if I recall, is that a cumulative number that you've accounted throughout the, over the years or is that within one year that you've got that many species?
That's a total, yeah, cumulative species.
So in your opinion, is it likely that we've got less species now than the cumulative number that we've encountered throughout the time given the insect number drop that you've explained before?
Possibly this year due to the extreme heat, but overall I'd say that insect numbers have been increasing, I mean, many of these species that we find are associated with heathland such as heathrustic moth and also grassland and woodland glade, obviously lots associated broadleaf woodland, but the fact that we've been creating a mosaic of different habitats, I think that it's a, it's a really good site for moths and in normal years we, we have lots of bat species and we have many, many bat, I mean, we only carry out two surveys but usually we have high numbers of passes and obviously on patrol we see large numbers of bats, I think it's worth bearing in mind, it might not sound that many, but we only put the trap out for two or three hours, and most people leave it out in their garden at night, but that's obviously not possible on Mousehold, so, I mean, that's literally five or six hours, probably two or three hours, five or six times a year to get up to that number, so I would suggest that it's, it's a pretty good site due to the, yeah, diversity and the management's been undertaken.
Is it worth considering asking some of the householders perhaps along Gertie Road who are back on to the heath if they'd like to perhaps have a moth trap at the end of their garden, you know, some of the time, I mean, that might capture more species as well over a longer period of time, is that worth considering?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, yeah, it'd be interesting to, if there are people trapping around the heath, to, to know what, what, you know, to see their species lists, to see what they're catching, because obviously that will be largely from the heath, it would expand.
Yeah, we might be able to... Yeah, we might be able to do a bit of a, yeah, survey amongst residents along that side of the road to see if they'd be willing to have moth traps in their garden at appropriate times in the year. Or whatever, insect traps of various kinds, I would imagine. Yeah, that's good. Any other questions, comments concerning this from anyone at all? Adam.
If you want to ask about the boy races issues, they've.
Well, we're getting on to that in any other business, so we'll, I was just considering, you know, more the the species, environment, et cetera. I did note something. Lost it now. Yeah, when, in the coming year, I mean, everyone will be hoping for perhaps a wetter spring and a wetter summer. Will that change or influence how you conduct surveys in the coming year, considering what's happened this year? Will you perhaps conduct them in a different way, perhaps in an earlier survey or something along with the later summer ones?
I'm hoping that that was, although they may become more regular, the, you know, the hot summers more often, you won't have these hot, dry summers more often, that it was, it was an extreme event. And I mean, I think many of the, on many of the surveys, we've got continuity and we're building up trend lines. I mean, certainly the bat survey, we've only done that for about around four years. So we haven't got a trend like we have on the butterfly survey, which we once started in 2003. And I took it over in 2008 when I started. And the second one on the eastern side started about 10 years ago. And already we're starting to see a trend line on that. So probably we will continue with those timings, especially on the national surveys, because they're tied into national projects and we have to do them at a specific time. But it'd be interesting to see, yeah, I mean, how much things recover next year and how much it affects the trend line. The trend line on both butterfly surveys is going up. It's in the annual record, I believe. So that's a really good sign as butterflies are indicators of biodiversity and habitat health, ecological health. And that generally the biodiversity is, you know, is doing well.
And with the development of the heathlands, do you expect any particular species, perhaps of not been evident in previous years, to start perhaps making appearance?
Yes, yes, certainly. I mean, always looking out for new species. And as the areas slowly increase, then it's more, and the condition of the habitat improves, then we're looking to find more, yeah, heathland, nattergrass and species, many of which are scarce and rare. Because obviously it's a rare habitat in the Greater Norwich area and a scarce habitat in Norfolk.
Just out of interest, I read recently in the Essex Serpent that people used to make a cordial out of gorse flowers. Not suggesting everyone goes out and starts harvesting gorse flowers when they come back in the spring. That's just a point of interest. Okay, so now we, oh, that was item seven, wasn't it? Oh, yeah, item seven. We now move on to, is that the end of our agenda? Oh, right, so we now move on to any other business. And I do know there are a number of things that people do want to raise on this, particularly concerning Britannia Road and the car park. Councillor Galvin, I'll let you kick off on that.
Thank you, I think I probably speak for some of the staff that have heard from residents that their evenings have been particularly made a real misery by lots of people in Britannia Road. And they couldn't come to the meeting today, although I did say they could come to listen. But they did have some questions they wanted me to raise, so I hope that's okay if I raise them. And I can also email them to.
No problem.
They're quite short, but there's a bit more detail on what they said. So they mainly focus around, these are just some questions they asked. Why is the car park shouldn't be a priority? Is access to cars really the most important thing now? And does the access of 1887 really even cover cars? That's a question you might be, I can answer personally. And they said, could we promote cycling rather than cars and perhaps make a bike lane a part of the road? They say access to the heath really doesn't depend on cars. They asked, I'm paraphrasing what they've said, so I'm happy to circulate the entire list of questions. They asked if it was possible to apply for a P S P O for the area to actually try and combat the vandalism, which they say is having an impact on species there as well. And they asked if it was possible to have a review of bylaws for the same reason. And they pointed to the environmental impact of a lot of litter. There's more detail on that in terms of the impact on people's lives in the evening. So ongoing, there, I think, and there's a fair amount of people. I'm aware, I'm new to this committee, this has been raised before, I'm aware it's being dealt with. But it is an email that I was asked to raise, so I'm raising it here.
Well, if I just add something in there, I'm certain Councillor Giles can then follow on from that. I had a phone call a couple of weeks ago from police local to the area who are keen on introducing a public service order for the car park up on Britannia Road. And a public service order is a specific kind of order, it only lasts for three months. But before you perhaps need to apply for another one. But the public service order will remove people from the car park. The original intention was from about six in the evening to five in the morning. I suggested as I go, I've been up there with tourists and things before, visitors to the town, that perhaps make it from 7.30 to eight in the evening to five in the morning. Although I had a suggestion from Marion this afternoon, that perhaps that could continue on to about seven in the morning to prevent people from parking their cars and walking to work and using it as a cheap car park. But public service order on the car park will move people on. And the police have told me that they will patrol that and they will instruct people to leave the area if they are there. Now, that's only short term, but that gives us some time to consider what can be done and achieved in the long term. We did have meetings at Pling Park Community Centre, must be about a year ago if my memory serves me correctly. And it was discussed there, the whole question of putting some rubber rumble strips of some description on Britannia Road itself. I suggested at the time about three, although in retrospect, I think probably about four, two at each end might be in order. And they will have the effect of removing a lot of vehicles, because a lot of the vehicles have got lowered suspension and fancy plastic body kits. And the people who drive those certainly wouldn't want them ruined by going over these rumble strips. The police are keen on having those. Councillor Birmingham, who's the councillor councillor for the area, is keen on putting some, there's councillor, councillor councillors have an allowance for minor works and she's keen on putting some of her allowance towards these rumble strips. There's been resistance from highways, which as you know, is run by county. And I spoke with Councillor Bishop Colton about this earlier. And we've got a couple of things in mind, some people to approach. As I said, highways are resistant to this, but it's not to say it won't happen or can't happen. But certainly in the short term, a public service order for the car park can and will be put in place. I do believe the police are already applying for that. But Councillor Giles, can you add some more on this?
Thanks, Mike, thanks for the question, Lucy. So we are very conscious that these issues have been going on for some time. And what there is the political world to do from the Cabinet is to introduce a public space protection order to give the police greater dispersal powers than they have currently in order to address the issue. Before we could introduce, before we could draft such an order, what we needed the police to do was to set out what actions they'd take into detail and the effectiveness of those actions. And that's because in introducing the P S P O, we have to demonstrate that to do so has been reasonable and proportionate. And that it's been introduced after the full range of existing tools and files have been deployed and not proved sufficiently effective at dealing with the issue. So what the police have come back to us with is they have tried to, by going up to the site when they received reports from residents, to use their existing powers to issue fixed penalty notices for traffic offences and seizure of vehicles under section 59 of the Police Reform Act. However, the issue is that they're going up to the site in a marked police car. And when they go up there, the offences that weren't taking place, the perpetrators stop carrying out because the police aren't there, essentially. After the police came back, the police then contacted us to inform us that they were seeking a closure order in the car park as described by Mike, between 6pm and 5am. And that would be anti-social behaviour, crime and, it's the act of 2014. And I'm aware of what our bylaws say, of what the Conservatives' bylaws say. However, the police believe they have power to issue a closure order, which they would have to apply to the Manchester ex court for, who would overrule our powers as conservatives, effectively under our bylaws. Moving back to the P S P Os, Tim Bacon, our community safety officer, has drafted two P S P Os. One which is more narrowly defined than the other in terms of the activities that people prohibit and give the police greater dispersal powers regarding. And what we've done at this stage is sent those back to the police for their initial thoughts before we commence the formal consultation process that we legally have to go through. However, there is very much the political will from the Cabinet, from ourselves, to make this happen. It's a commitment we've made and it's an issue that we do need to deal with.
I think it'd be a good idea if we make a note of this and have it put as a formal item on the next agenda. And possibly also invite one of the, or more of the local police who are in the area, who'd like to come up and give us their personal viewpoint or the viewpoint from the Norfolk police as well. That I think would be useful. So if we make a note of that and have that as a future agenda item, I'm ready. So anyone, sorry, councillor Luck, my apologies.
Yes, that all sounds very good, but it does seem as though it's going to be very labour intensive from the police. And I'd be looking to sort of think, is there something mechanical like the road busts that would actually negate the police to be there all the while? Councillor Birmingham said she'd like to put some money towards them. I mean, do we have, have we any idea what these would cost? I mean, presumably they are ones that just get sort of drilled into the road. I mean, we've got them outside South Park, outside the park in South Park Avenue, along the road.
No, there are a number of different kinds.
Yes, there are a number of different kinds.
Birmingham kind, but we're talking about the rubber ones, which I would imagine are relatively inexpensive.
That's what I was getting at, they seem to be, you know.
I did ask for some pricing on those some time ago, but no one's got back to me. We'll seek that up again.
Because I do think, you know, with best women in the world, she probably doesn't want to spend 25,000 on them. I mean, I think she gets about 12,000.
11,000.
12,000, isn't it?
No, 11 went up to 11,000.
It went up to 12,000, I thought, anyway. You know, I don't suppose she wants to send all of her budget on that.
Probably not, but when a councillor perhaps is willing to say put five, six thousand towards it, it then makes it hard for highways to sort of just say a blanket, no, you know.
Well, they would say blanket, no, unless somebody's coming up with another 5,000. It's going to be more than that, I anticipate.
There's every possibility that other councillors, county councillors nearby might put some money towards it. There's no reason why, for example, if all my allowance, both walk, isn't spent.
Oh, I don't think that works like that.
I, it probably doesn't, but you have to argue the point, which I do so frequently.
But anyway, I'm just concerned, I think that's a really good idea, but where would we get the rest of the money from? How much is it going to cost, where would we get the rest of the money from? And it's there in perpetuity.
Well, it takes all if necessary, yeah.
You know, I just think that although the police are very willing, what's to stop these people going somewhere else for a while? And then they come back in six months' time. They have to start it all over again, whereas something, I mean, have you ever thought about sort of blocking the road?
That, you know, blocking the road is another whole set of circumstances. And you're talking about changes to the highways act, I mean, all sorts of things. And I did some years ago suggest putting a movable barrier between the end of the Britannia Road car park and the residential area to stop cars from going through. But for various reasons, a no-no was put on that. Although I can't personally see why such an obstacle should be an obstacle, so to speak.
I think, you know, I think it would have the support of the residents, because they can use great, Kets Hill, can't they? They go in and out that way. And, you know, that would be music to their ears. I should think that, you know, you can't use a car to keep going round and round, because that's what I think they do.
They were racing around.
Racing around, round and round. So if they can't do that, you know, they'll go somewhere else. I wouldn't say you're going to get rid of them altogether, but they would go from there. And it's just another sort of perhaps a tool to look at that.
Well, that's certainly something we can have on our future agenda. And if we have someone from the Norfolk police come along, they can sort of flesh it out and give some additional detail from their viewpoint. And in the meantime, perhaps consult highways and find out from someone there who is easy to know, who can give some sort of firm, if not definitive, answer. Councillor Chelkin.
The point you just raised with regards to if you move them on and then inevitably you'll have them back, they'll pose more risk return. I'm curious if the, if the citizens of Norwich who are doing this anti-social behaviour have been approached and communicated with at all? If we've, or are we, are they too abstract or too menacing to approach and communicate with? And so I'm wondering if there's been any engagement activity conducted with these individuals. I've been told that they organise regular meets, which means there must be some kind of organisation and communication going on.
The recognition is quite informal, done through social media. So it's not as if they're a formal club of any description and you're right.
Have you got any, sorry, I mean, with all due respect, I'm genuinely curious if there's been actual any engagement or any effort, or if this is purely conjecture and assumption.
The police have conducted their own engagement in that respect. So it has been both considered and acted upon, but it's not to say that it can't happen again. And you're right, if they are moved on by temporary order, they will come back. It's in the nature of it. But, you know, looking at long term, this gives us an opportunity to perhaps once and for all take a long-term view and put some long-term measures in. But as you know, with various kinds of behaviours, they do occur and re-occur. You can't sort of say, right, we'll put these measures in and that's it for all time. Because it will come back again in some form, you have to be prepared for that. Councillor Galvin.
Thanks, just to clarify with, I don't know what's, there's going to be a, the police are seeking a closure anyway, as well as the P S P O. And also, I can pass on the details of the residents that have been in touch, but is the council writing to to the people from surveying in touch with the residents? is the council writing to to the people from serving in touch with the residents, just to let them know the facts and all this?
Yeah, just to come back to you, Councillor Champkin, there has been engagement. Um, the residents themselves are in an informal group, um, friends of Britannia Road. Um, they've been subjected to quite a lot of hostility from the people in the car meet. I've been up there and I I was thinking, well, you know, same along the same lines as you, perhaps they could be engaged with. But they're, they are pretty menacing, there are a lot of them. And when they clock a resident who is, you know, they know that they are trying to, the residents are trying to move them on and to stop their activities. They're then subjected to punishments in the form of parking outside their houses, sounding their horns, revving their engines, backfiring their engines. And one resident who came to our surgery the other night said they they've actually been chased by one of the car meet um attendees for wanting a better work. So so they're actually um not just not being listened to, they're actually being subjected to hostility as well.
That was the answer I was looking for. Thank you very much.
Those sorts of instances are a direct nine-nine-nine call. Um, I mean, I've been up there over the years with tourists and I've had people drive at me and had various altercations. I'll let people intimidate me. I tend to be a bit intimidating back myself, but still, that's another story. Um, Marion.
Just to put it in perspective, I was doing this for ten years and there's no coherence to what they want. Um, you can't get everybody to be on the same inch sheet, which makes it difficult. So we tried all sorts of different things over the over the ten years. We've had them, uh, we've done, done talk to them and asked them to come and meet with us. Um, but what I will say is it has, it's really, really got so much worse in the last eighteen months than it ever was before, because we could deal with it. Uh, there was some time at the county council, we'd had to put the chicane in, but they couldn't get, they couldn't get everybody to agree with it, not even eighty percent or something like that. So there's, there's a lot of individuals, um, and there's a lot of groups who do not want to talk to each other. Um, but I think it's getting so bad now, they might actually all come together if we could, we could come up with something like you've been talking about, Jack. Um, and it's, it really has been the most awful. It was the worst thing I ever did because you cannot please everybody. And um, and I will tell you, I I didn't laugh at the time, but I did when I got home. One chap came to me and he said, it's a wonderful place to live. I've always wanted to live here in a family-built house, but I haven't got enough room for my cars. And I said, well, how many cars have you got? He said, six. I said, it's it's on street parking. We don't have, um, they don't want to be paid for the parking. They don't want to have it. It it's all sorts of different people doing different things. But what I did notice just in last year, people are coming together at last. And and that's, that's what may help. Um, and if we can get everybody on the same handbook, it would be good.
Yeah, and we'll have to look forward to that in the future. Well, we've got this down as a, I'd say, major agenda item coming up. And so it will be something to to look forward to and to get our teeth into on uh our next meeting. Um, Adam, your hand up.
Uh, thanks, thanks everyone. I'll just respond to a few things. So in terms of enforcement, uh, the, we have been in correspondence with the Ministry of Justice about the potential for applying rid of rid local CCTV cameras uh to the railings of the older ten car racks at the car park. Uh, we did first inquire with county highways about attaching them uh to the street lights, but because of the old nature of the street lights, I don't know technical details, uh, that wasn't feasible. Um, we have had extensive correspondence with county highways, but it has been uh frustrating, I think is probably the best word to use. And that's why I think we need to take action ourselves because it's been a very, very uh slow process with county and they're strong indications, they're not willing to fund anything. Uh, and even if we were successful in obtaining external grant funding, uh, they would be concerned about the uh the long-term costs that it would place on them in terms of the maintenance costs going forward. So while highways changes would be fantastic, uh, while they seem to not be forthcoming quickly, I think it's important that we take action to nip the issue in the bud as quickly as possible. In terms of closure order, as Mike did say earlier, that would be for a maximum of three months. Uh, that'd be if the magistrate's court decide.
Okay. If no one has anything more to say or add, then I'll call out our mayor briefly.
Just a word of caution, um, it's, we're committing time until it starts. So the three months would not show us what, because in the bad weather, it is not as bad. You need to do, this should have been done at the beginning of the summer.
Yeah, we'll we'll be prepared for that and we'll have that considered in our future agenda.
I think it might, I'm sorry, it might be a visible waste of time in the winter time because it's not as bad.
I don't think so, because we will, we'll be able to put measures in place for the next spring and summer.
Yeah, yeah. So as long as we're ready for it.
Mm hmm. Okay, if that's the case, then thank you everyone for coming along to our matter on Conservatives.
I was also went to, went to ask this bit, so I might be on the
Quickly before we do close.
And there is something on page five about the public toilet refurbishment.
Oh, yeah, we were going to mention that one. So we'll do that briefly before we formally close the meeting.
An update or not?
Yeah. Thank you for that.
Yes, uh, yes, um, we just recently had a conversation with property services because they weren't very close coming with sort of quotations and what have you on the site. Um, what they've done is they've given, they've offered some different options, um, which we now have to consider. Um, but there are other factors to that. I mean, one of the options that they've suggested is for a unit very much the same as what we've had put in Erland Park. Um, that we're gonna put in Wentworth and Waterloo Park, the sort of freestanding sort of toilet unit where you've got two toilets and um a disabled toilet. But that would have been placed on the other side of the road. Um, uh, and with that, you've then got the implication of that there's a lot of groups that that are on the ZAC side and then they'd have to cross the road and there isn't a crossing. So if we were gonna take that option, you'd have to look at obviously the cost of a crossing. So there's, there's things that we've got to look at, but to to refurbish, to fully refurbish um the the toilet blocks as they are is gonna be a considerable amount because they're in such disrepair, but we may have to go down that route, but we've got to look at you know, we're currently in the process of of trying to get some actual sort of monetary um sort of information so we can make that decision because I think they're not listed, the the toilets, um, and you know, if it, if it goes into the thousands and thousands, which it may do because they are completely rotten, um, we we may then have to think as to whether that's the other option. There's no electricity to the the toilets, which means we'd have to tap into ZAC supply. That comes with its own, um, sort of, there's, there's issues related to that. You know, is there gonna be enough? How are we gonna do it? Sacs don't really want to be associated with the toilets because they're in such disrepair, but you know, they are where they're positioned. So there is a bit more work that we need to do. Um, and obviously, I I don't think we can make any sort of decisions until we get some kind of monetary sort of valuation and Wood and I have said, we spoke to MPS this morning and we're, we're, it's a work in progress. So hopefully by the time we meet again, we'll have a lot more information to to make those decisions. Because I don't know how much it's gonna cost to put a crossing in if we go down that route. And I think we would need a crossing if we were to take the 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 option because of what you were saying about the the number of schools that aren't really prepared to sort of take children across a a road without anything in place. Um, so as I said, we'll obviously give you an update when we get some more information.
Mm hmm. You did make some of your
I don't know why this is making me quite tired. Sorry about that. Thank you, thank you so much for that. And and I don't know anything about toilet refurbishment or building new toilets, but um, I'm hoping that if it does result in the toilet facilities across the road, that the two toilets and a disabled could also maybe have the changing places facility integrated into that because it would be starting from scratch, if you like, rather than trying to sort of work something out with the the toilets that I've, yeah, I've seen them. I will kindly show this when I was holding, when I was with Councillor Giles and and I've, I've seen them and I can see what challenge that would be to refurbish. Thank you.
You did have a short-term plan as well, didn't you?
Yeah, we do. Yeah, we have a short-term plan. I mean, the one thing I would say about, just also to say about having a unit, we can bolt that on to the work that we're doing with Wentworth, Wentworth Park and South Park Park because we've already got the sort of the contractors and processes in place. So it would actually work out to be a lot more economical because we could use the plans and, you know, it would actually, it would just be part of the project. They'd just bolt it on the end. So for a sort of financial point of view, that probably would be mainly the best option. It's just whether it's feasible with moving your children across. But if we were to do that, it would have, it would have two unisex toilets and it would have a disabled toilet with all change facilities and it would be new and fresh and clean and, I mean, I don't know if you've seen the 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 block path, but it would be sort of not dissimilar from from that. Um, but I think we were saying, obviously, this, this is gonna take a little while to make those decisions because we need to get some more information. But what we will probably do, or what we'll discuss doing, is making one of the two toilets a bit more usable. There's no electricity, but, you know, they need a little bit of patch up and even if it's just a, you know, a lick of paint and just a bit of a freshen up in the meantime. But of course, we need to be mindful of how much money we spend on doing that. But, you know, it might be that we we close the ladies, which I think are in a bit more disrepair and make the the men into unisex and just make it usable as an interim sort of solution. Um, but again, we'll, we'll have more information. We we need to sort of work with with property services a bit more to to even sort of understand how much that's going to cost. And then we will, I think, at the next, in November, we can perhaps bring those figures so we can have a a decision on what we want to do.
Mm hmm. So it'll be a future agenda item too. Okay. If that's the case, thanks everyone for coming along. It's been an interesting, informative meeting and enjoy the rest of your afternoon. Thank you.